Okay, good evening and welcome to the March 14th, 2023 New Bern Board of Aldermen meeting. If you would, please bow your head for a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for your traveling mercies you granted each and every one of us here tonight. We thank you for the opportunity to gather again to conduct your business, and we ask that you lead, guide, and direct our conversation, our discussion, decision-making. We ask these things in your name. Amen. If you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance or apply.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, if you would, please start the roll.
Alderman Prill. Alderman Royal.
Here.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Odom.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Bess.
Present.
Alderman Berthson.
Here.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda. There's no changes?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Any aye? Any opposed? Okay, agenda is approved. Just for the record, Alderman Prill is participating via telephone for this evening. Next board is item number four. Do we have any petition of citizens, Ms. Clerk? Okay, first up is Victor J. Taylor of 28, 2817 Walter Drive. Alderman Taylor. They say you never lose the title, right?
Good evening, board. My name is Victor Taylor, 2817 Walter Drive, New Bern, North Carolina. Thank you. Good evening to the mayor, Board of Aldermen, City Manager, and Assistant City Manager, and everyone else here. Thank you. I just want to talk about, I want to thank you all for the endorsement, for the sponsorship, city sponsorship for our parade, and I also want to thank the mayor, Alderman Prill, Alderman Royal, City Manager, and Assistant City Manager for coming out to the parade. I got a lot of news from the parade. We had over 500 vehicles in this parade. So we had a wonderful, wonderful parade. I got a lot of comments from the spectators that they loved that you all walked and was personal with them and showed love from the city. So again, I just come here to say thank you all for all y'all's support. Again, and also, I didn't want to leave this out. Board of Aldermen, mayor, and citizens of New Bern, you all have the greatest city clerk in the history. I wanted to share that with her. Customer service is what New Bern does, and that's the example of customer service. This young lady right here. So I wanted to share.
I'll pay you.
I don't take any money, but thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your efforts in putting that together, Mr. Taylor. Next is Sharon Broadus of 2906 Betty Gresham Lane. I hope I pronounced that right.
Yep. All right. Thank you all for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. I am addressing the continued imminent danger of flooding of the homes along the north side of Betty Gresham Lane in the Lakeview subdivision, 2900 through 2908. Since our last discussion, the homeowners have continued to reach out to Nolan W. Sides and their team to recreate the backyards of the affected homes to no avail. Most emails go into the cosmos, no reply whatsoever in most cases. We did have one email that was returned to one of the homeowners that NCCI was working with Thomas Engineering to resolve this issue. We have seen no proof of this, nor has a date been sent to us when work will begin. This is of utmost importance as the rainy spring season approaches with the hurricane season starting June 1st of 2023. The Lakeview subdivision is in the Zone X area for flooding, which means extremely low danger of flooding, 0.2% by FEMA determination, and one is not required to obtain flood insurance. Yet I and others have and must obtain flood insurance. We have a man-made flood zone. This has been observed by almost every city official concerned with the building of new homes. I have already spent thousands of dollars doing what I can to prevent water from coming into the back of the home, but it is not enough when the entire backyard tilts towards the back of the house. I have discussed with my insurance agency what is happening and the lack of concern from the builder in the city. They assure me that they will help me, but they will expect to be compensated by the responsible parties that have been duly notified. How can the city of New Bern, who signs off on this certificate of occupancy, allow this type of behavior to continue from builders? Why is the builder not held accountable for the lack of providing a safe and habitable home for the purchasers? Per Wikipedia, a certificate of occupancy is a document issued by a local government agency or building department certifying a building, including the property it sits upon, compliance with applicable building codes and other laws, and indicating it to be in a condition suitable for occupancy, and that the residential property or home is appropriate for occupancy and adheres to all safety standards. How can our homes be considered safe if we're in such a grave danger of flooding? There will be much loss of property and the cost will be extraordinary. Will the city of New Bern guarantee me and others that you will cover all the costs associated with the flooding of the homes? There are other developments Nolan W. Sides and the Sides family have built in New Bern with similar drainage issues. This has been occurring for approximately the last 20 years. Apparently, the city considers these issues of no concern and continues to let Nolan Sides and others build in the city of New Bern with no recourse for the citizens purchasing the homes. And how can this be allowed to continue? We have been abandoned by Nolan Sides. Look at our development. It is a mess left unfinished and unkept. New Bern is becoming a city looking for an increased tax base with no thought to who built in the city limits and doesn't seem to care who is hurt. I invite each and every one of you, plus any other departments that are applicable to this situation, to tour the development with me and observe and discuss the challenges faced by the homeowners of Lakeview. This is your city as well as ours. Please be respectful and responsible for the activities that the city has allowed to occur. The city is the moving force here. I challenge the city, you, the city representatives, to do the right thing by your citizens. Thank you for your time and the upcoming effort on our behalf. And those are pictures of flood zones in our backyard. One picture was of the Zone X verification by FEMA, and other pictures showing the basically habitable zones in areas like that picture of a post put into the ground. It's not even backfilled, seriously? You know, that just goes right over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Christopher and Carolyn Adams of 2904 Betty Gresham Lane.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to address our issues of concern with you this evening regarding the flooding of our backyards and unkempt areas within our subdivision. We expressed our concerns with you regarding the flooding of our backyards at last month's meeting on February 14th, so we won't revisit that subject again in its entirety. However, during that meeting, the city's legal counsel and managing director advised us that the city of New Bern has no working relationship with Nolan Commercial Construction Company, even though Nolan told us that you were working with them. As a result of that information, we learned that NCCI was dishonest with us. However, NCCI, also Nolan Commercial Construction Company, continues to be dishonest with us today. From the onset, NCCI has not been a company of its words. However, as new homeowners in the New Bern area, we do want to remind you of how disappointed we are that our voices are not being heard by NCCI regarding the flooding of our backyards within the Lakeview subdivision. At the meeting on February 14th, we, along some of our neighbors who are present here this evening from the Lakeview subdivision, were trying to confirm whether the city of New Bern was working with NCCI alongside Thomas Engineering and NCCI's landscaper for the purpose of clearing this swell along the back of our yards, which is currently being blocked with debris, thus causing our backyard's lots 10, 11, 12, and 13 to flood with each substantial rainfall that takes about seven to 10 days for the water to drain after it stops. And by that time, another rainfall has been forecast. Each affected backyard is graded improperly, which results in significant flooding and pounding of rainwater for days. We provided you with pictures last month showing you our flooded backyard, which is lot number 11, and we are unable to use it for the purposes that we had intended. For the past three months, we have been told by NCCI that they are working with the city of New Bern, Thomas Engineering, and NCCI's landscaper to have the swell behind our yards cleared. NCCI has refused to provide us with a timeline for when the work is to begin, and they will not provide us with any contact information for the engineering firm or the name of the representative to whom they have said they have spoken to at the city level. Due to our not being able to obtain any information from NCCI is what prompted us last month to ask for your assistance with this matter. We were told that we would be making settlement on our home within eight weeks of signing our contract on August 9th, 2021, because the home was already being built. Instead of eight weeks, it took nearly 12 months. By then, our interest rate had nearly doubled, and the rent on our property had increased by $400. And with the housing market being in scrambles during the fallout of the pandemic, we were at the mercy of our builder. But we're not the only ones who NCCI had kept on hold to have their home completed, and it wasn't all due to the building industry having labor issues or problems getting supplies during the pandemic. It is as though the builders have no oversight once they have obtained their building permits. They seem to be using the city as a scapegoat, and we are hoping that you could at least get them to stop lying to us about your involvement in this matter. NCCI can be very defiant. In a letter to NCCI dated December 16, 2022, from our legal counsel, Merritt Webb, NCCI was advised that they were noncompliant pursuant to the terms of our bylaws and the store morgue provisions as outlined in our contract. NCCI ignored our attorney's letter and all subsequent communication from him and from us concerning our home. In fact, they told us that they refused to speak to us because we were consulting with an attorney to determine, I'm sorry, they said they refused to talk to us because we were consulting with an attorney. It wasn't until I advised them that we were only consulting with an attorney to determine if we had any rights as it pertained to our bylaws because they had initially pushed back on addressing the issue.
Would your husband like to continue?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Would your husband like to continue? He can have four minutes as well.
You said not for everything? Wow.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Thank you. Next is Margaret Phillips of 1003 Abbey Lee Avenue. Margaret Phillips. Okay, move on. Daniel and Amy Martin of 3091 Betty Gresham Lane.
Thank you. I don't have anything written down, but this has gone on for so long. Trust me, I've memorized all of it. But I share with all these people, I think, helplessness because this builder, from the beginning, when we're talking about these infrastructure problems, drainage and grading, they said the HOA will take care of it, and there is no HOA. They've collected the HOA fees at closing of every one of these homeowners and the ones that aren't here, and they have made no effort to fix these problems. I've got a drainage ditch. I'm at 3091 Betty Gresham Lane. There's a drainage ditch right beside our house, and the road, Betty Gresham, from both ways falls into two drain traps that go down this ditch. And I don't have pictures, but it has eroded out for the second time, well over three feet deep and about four feet wide, to the point that there's a mud flat washed out into the lake. And this builder has had no effort and made no effort to respond to anybody, as I'm sure you'll continue to hear from everybody here. And my thing that I want to employ to y'all is we, I feel very helpless because there's nothing being done, and it continues to worsen, and here comes the hurricane season, and this is the first home I've ever owned. And this has been a nightmare, trying to get this property taken care of. So thank you.
Thank you. Next is Virgil and Barbara Pruen of 1009 Clydesdale Court.
Yes, hi. I'm Linda Leatherwood. I'm one of their daughters that have been helping them through all of this fiasco. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Fortunately, unlike some of the prior speakers, my parents have not experienced any flooding issues because of where their house is in the neighborhood. However, they experienced numerous issues with this builder. One, they kept on getting excuses after excuses as to why they couldn't start their home, why progress wasn't going forward, and they kept using the supply chain issues, however, four houses that went under contract after my parents, some of them larger, closed and went to settlement before my parents. My parents settled on their house in Virginia. They moved down here without a place to stay. We found a rental for them in Fairfield Harbor. They had to put everything in storage. They had to pay rent. They had to move condos within Fairfield Harbor. They had to extend their rate lock. Well over $20,000 they've spent out of their nest egg from the sale of their home in Virginia. To this day, they're still waiting on work to be done, and they're shower. They have had to have their floor jackhammered up because of plumbing issues with this builder. They found construction debris in their plumbing. They installed a water closet that was not in the contract. They installed a tub that was not in the contract. It, I mean, the list just goes on and on. One of, one of the issues that NCCI builder kept quoting was the supply chain issues. We, they didn't know that my husband, myself, and my younger sister moved to New Bern back in June 2021. My parents, who are in their 80s, they lived on the same street in Springfield, Virginia since 1967, so this was all new. This is the very first home that they've ever moved in that was brand new, and the experience unfortunately has been just horrific and it continues to be. Just the delays in closing, the amount of money, the things that are still outstanding. I, those are the things I believe that other neighbors have experienced, and I, I don't know what can be done to hold this builder accountable outside of a personal lawsuit that my parents would have to file and, again, spend more money to hold somebody accountable for something that should have never happened. So I don't know what the council can do to help, but we have an entire neighborhood. My sister and I and my husband live three minutes from them, and we visited the site nearly every day, giving my parents an update. And everybody we ran into, once the houses were built, have complaints about this builder. And it's my understanding that they are building another subdivision across Route 70, very close to Lakeview. And I think allowing this builder to continue in this manner without holding them accountable at some level is just going to perpetuate citizens like us standing in front of you pleading for help. So anything you can do to get this builder held accountable, I think, would be much appreciated by not only my parents, but everybody in the development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is David Leisher of 2906 Betty Gresham Lane.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the privilege to address him at Town Council tonight. As I have attended and followed the proceedings at council meetings over the past several months, I'm starting to see a developing trend in these meetings. The citizens of New Bern are asking for more transparency and responsibility from their elected officials. In mid-November of last year, the city manager and several department heads visited my property to observe firsthand the poor grading conditions left by the developer, NCCI Construction, as well as the potential for devastating flooding caused by these conditions. As the visit concluded, I was asked if I liked living in New Bern. I replied that I was getting used to it, in a tone that was not exactly spoken in a positive manner. Being somewhat surprised with my answer, Mr. Hughes then told me his goal was for New Bern to be a place that people would want to come to and not leave. A few days later, I sent an email expressing my thoughts and concerns about New Bern. My alderman called me a few nights later, saying that this email had ruffled a few feathers at City Hall. These concerns range from replacement of sidewalks and crosswalks within the neighborhood to improperly placed and poorly placed streetlights, and most importantly, speeders along Betty Gresham Lane. Issues, these issues have since been addressed but not yet corrected. Well, tonight, I'm here to ruffle a few more feathers. During the meeting last February 14th, a fellow New Bern resident stood before you asking for transparency from city government. Other citizens spoke up about water and sewer systems in their neighborhoods that have not functioned for over six years. At the conclusion of the meeting, during the new business session, several aldermen spoke about city responsibilities. These were some of the comments made during that time. It is concerning that there are so many residents who are frustrated and disheartened. Transparency leads to trust. The board needs to come together to address some of the issues. Everyone is elected by the citizens. Another alderman stated in response to the drainage and flooding situation experienced by my neighbors and by extension, myself and my wife, that there should be something the city could do to hold the developers responsible. The final alderman to speak stated that the city needs to decide whether it is going to continue a structure of maintenance or to restructure and manage growth while also maintaining infrastructure. He also stated that the city does not possess the engineering expertise or capacity to look at plans, traffic grading, et cetera, due to sheer volume, but then I'm confused by the next statement of bringing these statements in-house. Why then bring them on board if you cannot already handle the volume? Would it not be smarter to slow down or stop growth and take care of what you have? Refuse to blindly sign off on things until they have met plans and specs as drawn up. Do not grant certificates of occupancy until everything meets code. Three aldermen publicly stated last month that they are in favor of working with and for the citizens of New Bern to correct problems and place more responsibility on the builders and developers. Two aldermen did not speak to this, either due to absence or choice. The final alderman was quite content to do nothing. My own alderman has done a good job of representing his ward, and I think I know how he feels, but I don't want to put words into his mouth that he may or may not have said publicly. With the support of only one of them, this number would be a more minimum of four aldermen, creating majority. Even a few of the city workers whom I've randomly spoken with have stated that New Bern is growing too fast and needs to slow down and take a hard look at things. And I'm going to skip ahead a little bit because I'm running out of time, but I want to use a quote from over 2,000 years ago, when a very famous and influential man was speaking to religious and political leaders of his time. "You are like whitewashed tombs, which look beautiful on the outside, but on the inside are full of dead man's bones and everything unclean." You want to present New Bern as a nice, quaint, I got three lines.
You can finish your call.
You want to present New Bern as a nice, quaint, pretty little historical town on the outside, but underneath it is rapidly turning into a cesspool of disasters. It's time to clean up the graveyard and propose and pass ordinances and resolutions to hold developers and builders accountable for their actions, beginning with NCCI. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Pamela Gayhart and BJ Honeycutt of 1007 Loretta Lane.
First of all, I'd like to thank y'all for your time. I don't have a prepared speech. I moved to New Bern in June of 2022 from Garner, North Carolina. Garner had nothing to offer as retirees for both my partner and I, and I'm sure for many people here, Garner had nothing to offer. We visited New Bern once and decided this is where we wanted to live our retirement years. We found a lot in the subdivision that we thought would be not perfect, but good enough. Nobody has used the word lies, but I want to, I want to tell you about the lies that we were told by NCCI. And I'm sure every person here that lives in NCCI, I mean, in Lakeview subdivision, will attest they were told these same lies. It's not that I mean that I like living in New Bern any less. I love it here. I do not appreciate the lies that this builder was able to impose on the homeowners and that will continue to impose on their next subdivision in New Bern off Highway 70 behind Ace Hardware. We were told that there was going to be lake access. We live directly across the street from the lake. I'm 66 years old. My partner is 67 years old. I don't feel that walking over rocks to get to the lake is lake access. That's one lie. We were told that it was going to cost X amount of dollars for upgrades. We upgraded our flooring. We upgraded our stove. Two minor things. But we have it in writing from NCCI. This is how much it would cost. They reneged. They lied to us. And unless we agreed to walk away from $10,000, we had to accept their lies. I'm retired. My partner's retired. I don't have $10,000 to just throw away. So we accepted their lies. No communication between their realtor, the builder, and our realtor, none, for 13 months, none, passed the buck. Tell them what they want to hear. Sell the house. Do not hold NCCI accountable. That's not acceptable. They wouldn't honor what their superintendent told us would be taken care of. The day we moved into our house, it had never been cleaned, had never been power washed. They told us it would, and they lied to us. And I ask, how many homeowners here were lied to? Lied to? They were lied to, but they still bought the house because NCCI had them, just like they had us. Does anybody here have $10,000 to throw away? I didn't, and I'm not going to. But somebody has to hold this builder accountable, and they're still building in New Bern. New Bern is where we wanted to retire, and we love it here. But don't continue to allow somebody as unscrupulous as NCCI to continue building because you're going to have a lot of unsatisfied citizens. And this is a great place to live. Don't get me wrong. I'm just sorry I bought from NCCI. But wait, there's more.
Ma'am, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
What subdivision do you live in?
Lakeview.
Lakeview.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Pete Frye, 406 Forbes Alley.
I'm here, do you, does it, did you guys all get a copy of my latest plan for the Jones Street?
Yes. Clerk, clerk gave it to us.
Well, you guys know, I've started the process back in October, and it's still going on. And I've learned a lot from going to the RDC meetings and the alderman meetings. So I've changed my plan a little bit, and it's more in line with what the RDC, the Redevelopment Commission, is intended to do, which would be to increase homeownership and also affordable housing. So I, the bid that has been here that I put in, that's what I intend to do now. I want to build a house for myself, for my family. In this neighborhood that I've lived in for 10 years, I've moved my business here, and I really love this neighborhood. And I love the park. I love, I love that it's close to my business, and I want to continue to live here and build a house for my family, and also an affordable home that I will, I plan on donating up to 10,000. And also, an affordable home that I plan on donating up to $10,000 a year from the rental property to the Stanley White Rec Center. And so, I just wanted to let you know that the RDC has a really good opportunity now to achieve some of their goals. If they allow me to do this construction and build there, and at the same time, they have hundreds of other properties that they could build on, at the same time, it could be a win-win for RDC and Pete Frye and City of New Bern. So I hope you take a good look at the presentation, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Douglas McKeever of 1005 Loretta Lane.
Hello, my name's Doug McKeever. My family recently relocated from Wilson, North Carolina. The problem why I'm here is two wrongs don't make right. One, you know, we hear from the builder, well, it's built to code, you know? I have some issues with drainage as what has been documented in my construction inspection. It is part of North Carolina code that you can't have a negative grade. So where's your building department on that? It was changed in 2021. Also, if there's rapid expansion here, my emergency gas shut-off valve is located in the actual fireplace. So if you have a problem with your fireplace and you have to shut it off, you have to reach in into the fireplace to shut it off. And when I called the gas company, they couldn't believe it. They said, well, you better keep a pair of channel locks ready and run outside and turn it off on the meter. So some things are very behind, especially on the gas process. Thirteen to fifteen states don't allow vent-free fireplaces, and Canada outlawed them. These are kind of dangerous, and when we did use it for the first time, it set off the carbon monoxide detector. So that's one issue. The other issue is drainage. I have my yard floods, and it was documented before the closing that there's a negative grade. Also, I have some structural issues on the house, and when I went to your building department, I was told that they get four or five complaints every day, and you could always walk away. And that was...I wasn't very happy. And then I physically showed him the picture, what the state of North Carolina, Micklinburg County puts out a handbook, what not to do. And then I took a picture of my framing, and it was exactly what they said not to do. And I showed it to a structural engineer. He said, I see your concerns. Went back to your department, well, since it sheathed on the outside, you know, with OSB, you know, it's okay. And I was told, you know, part of the problem is you're not letting the builder do its job. And I said, okay. He looked at the picture, and I said, well, we got the CO two days ago. And he said, let me see that picture again? Yeah, that means code. That's just not going to cut it. And I'm going to have to end up pulling out one bathroom, they stacked another bathroom on top of it because it is structural. So that's one thing. The other thing is my roof overhangs three inches. And one thing I could tell you, it's pretty windy here. It's so windy, I had to pay $1,600 extra for a separate wind policy, which is actually more than my homeowner's insurance. So, you know, my inspector said the roof is going to fail, the wind is going to take it, or it's going to curl over as it's doing in the picture and crack. So part of this falls on the inspection process. And, you know, I did my due diligence, I checked with the licensing board, there was a couple of issues with the Better Business Bureau, but that's it.
Thank you.
What subdivision again?
Lakeview.
Next and last petition is for Daniel Glatson of 1004 Loretta Lane.
Thank you. I live in Lakeview, I used to live in Long Lake Mines, which is just across the road. Brand new house there, was built by a different builder, had problems, and I would get them corrected as I told the builder. This guy is unbelievable. They keep giving excuses, they can't get a hold of people to do my repairs. I have a problem with the trimmer on the garage, it's been that way since I bought the house. I've been there five months, no contractor. Contractor for the trim came by one day, looked at me, I'll see you Saturday, no show. Okay, fine, call him. Well, we can't get a hold of them, fine, whatever. You people just constantly go on with this story of can't get a hold of people. The other thing is my front door is warped. I've told them time and time again, I've shown them pictures, sent them numerous pictures, they've been out twice to fix it, they've Mickey Mouse it to get it somewhere close. My mother-in-law has arthritis, she can hardly even turn the handle to get up the door. If I'm out there to do it, she's stuck in the house. That's not good. The other thing is drywall upstairs, what they did mudding, is not finished. In the sewer, the drainage system, that has not been cleaned since I've been there, I've taken my own personal mower, go out there and mow it, the grass is up to my chest. I went out there with a mower, took it all down. It took me over four hours to do the little area. That was a problem in the ditch. The metal stakes they would put in for drainage, to keep the debris out of the drain, they left them. There are little kids in this neighborhood, if they go fall on one of them, it will go through them. I took my truck, hooked up a chain with my neighbor, and we yanked them out. I can't have one of these kids get hurt because they're being not responsible with what they do. Let's see what else to do. Yeah, the metal pole is the biggest thing with me, and them not doing their job and pawning it off to somebody else is not right. I'm not a carpenter myself, but I'll tell you what, I can do a lot better job than what they seem to be doing. Thank you for your time.
Mr. City Manager, City Attorney, we're going to continue hearing this. You and I have been on site, we've looked at some of the drainage problems they have. I know that one of the residents made a comment that Sides or a representative of Sides has been in touch with us. Are you aware of anyone from Sides calling anybody here?
No, I am not. And when I met with David Leisure and some of those residents out there last year, they asked if I would send a letter to Sides Construction. I did, I never received, I never received a response. A month after I sent that email, I realized that it went to a wrong email address, there was a letter missing, so I resent that information. But it went to their engineer nonetheless, and they never responded to us.
Okay, so George, have you by any chance, have you got any comments? No? A lot of this stuff that I'm hearing tonight is cosmetic. And there's a lot of it is structural. Yeah. The structural part, I only can assume that they can complain to the North Carolina Department of Insurance and their licensing division, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And I would encourage you to do that. If you, they get complaints, they're going to call on Mr. Sides to answer these complaints. What can the city of New Bern do to hold this builder accountable for this roomful of people sitting in here that's not very satisfied with his actions? I'm afraid that one's yours.
Yes, sir. I wish I had a silver bullet for you, but I don't. I'm trying to think of a speech that's short and helpful. Let's do it this way. Many of you know that from this board, that local governments, cities and counties, only have the power and authority that's given to you by state statutes, right? If there's not a state statute that gives a city the power to regulate, there is no such power. When it comes to the state building code, it is a North Carolina state building code. Only authority local governments have is to enforce that particular building code, and it's a minimum building code. It's not the best building code, it's the minimal that the state thinks is safe. And cities can and have to enforce that code. If a licensed contractor applies for a building permit, the city has a legal obligation to give that builder the permit. We can't pick and choose who we think the better builders are. The state makes that decision when it gives them a license. The city's legal authority is to make sure they have a license. And if they do, we have a legal obligation to give them that permit. We can't withhold permits. If we get too many complaints, don't like a builder, whatever reason, we must give the building permit if they have a general contractor license, they apply for the permit and they pay the fee. Thereafter, the city inspects, and they're inspecting for compliance with the minimum building code. A lot of things have been said here that factually we simply don't know. I can't tell you that the building code has been met or not on some of these structural issues. I would have no idea. I would invite folks to get an engineer to give it a look, and then report back to the city inspections department so that they can reflect on what was given to the city. Nevertheless, more sad news, local government inspections departments are not guarantors of perfect construction. They're there to review and inspect, enforce compliance with the code, but if mistakes are made by a local government, there is no liability for missing something with compliance with the building code. So it's there, it's something, it is helpful, but it is not an insurance policy or a guarantee that your house has been built consistent with the code. On the flooding issues, the best the city can do, and again, we're looking at what do our state statutes allow? The state statutes allow us to have a stormwater regulatory ordinance, which we do. The city implements that, monitors it, regulates it, inspects it. The bulk of that work, though, is ultimately done by the state. And I know in this particular case, staff has reached out to the state to go back and double-check, triple-check everything to make sure that all the stormwater regulations have been complied with. And if they have, that's simply all the city can do. My understanding is this water may be coming off adjoining property and not within that subdivision. And again, when the city is regulating a stormwater plant, it is for that subdivision, it is not addressing what other water may be put on that property by some other property, or that would be a private lawsuit to go untangle that. So I don't know if the state's, George, if the state's been back recently to look?
No, it's my fault.
Okay. But they were here, how long ago was it, George?
From my last call, it's probably last April.
Okay. So I think the state has exhausted its regulatory authority to ensure compliance, the city has as well, and I don't know what more, any more tools that we have in our toolbox to be helpful.
Okay. And just, again, just to note, Lake Tyler, is that Lake Tyler, right? That's where you lived, Dave?
Lakeview.
Lakeview, I'm sorry. Lakeview and several, I think some of the other subdivisions over there, it's not city property, it's still belong, it's private property, still owned by the developer.
Right.
So the roads, the stormwater, the streetlights, and all that stuff is the responsibility of the developer, correct?
Yes, sir. And one tool that we do have at the staff level is to make sure, until that infrastructure is turned over to the city, to make sure that we have a performance bond in cash in place to cover repairs or construction in the event the contractor doesn't finish. And I know that there are many phases, sidewalks gutters, curbing, that have not been turned over to the city, for which we have funds that we're holding and will not release until they're brought into compliance and given to the city.
And David and all the others from this neighborhood, I know there's some of this stuff that you really don't want to hear because we really do not have the authority to put a stop to this contractor. Now, I've asked, you know, we don't have the authorities. But I'm going to tell you, one of the most powerful tools that you have right now is when you stand up here and you start talking about this builder and the subdivision you live in, and this lady, young lady from the press picks it up, and a lot of the other press picks it up, that's a powerful tool. So maybe somebody, you'll get somebody's attention.
I'm sorry, the petition of citizens is closed, but I did want to make a comment. We've got a list here of folks that spoke tonight, and we have a record now of what their concerns and complaints are. If the board is not opposed to it, what I would like, I would like for staff to take these petitions, review the addresses, and whatever took place during the building process, if there are notes that were made about things that were inadequate, that should have been addressed, that should all be in the record, I'm assuming?
Yes, sir.
I would like all of that pulled for each one of these addresses that has a structural or a stormwater drainage issue. We can't do anything about the tile in the bathroom, or backsplash, or some of the other things that I saw that's outside of our purview. But if it's a structural concern or a stormwater concern, I would like to see that record. And then what I would like is Alderman Astor, myself, city manager, city inspector, and if somebody else on the board wants to join us, I would like to go out and physically look at these so we can have a visual representation. I know you've done this, I know staff has done this before, but we need to be very clear and succinct in what we're saying of what's within our purview and what's not. And I think that's the best way to handle this because there's no reason for these folks to take their time to come here. I understand what Alderman Astor's saying, it's going to be on the news media, that's bad press, I get all that, but there's no reason for them to come month after month when there's nothing that we can do. We need to make sure that we are clear with them on what's in our purview and what direction we can give them that they may can seek some help. So, is the board opposed to what I just recommended?
I agree.
Okay.
I'd like to add one other thing, too. The city attorney suggested when it came to the structural issue, for you to engage an engineer and then go back to inspections to see if it was in compliance. Have you done that?
I have.
You have? And you went back to inspections? What was the results?
They told me because it had sheathing on it, it was okay, but I have the actual written code right here, which is what not to do, and they did it. And it also tells you how to repair it, and they did it.
So that's one of those issues that I think would be addressed whenever we can get out there and actually look at it with the inspector and the homeowner face-to-face, because there are certain things. There's, the code is different if you put a brick facade versus a wood or vinyl facade, the code changes, so that could have something to do with it. The last comment I'll make, and I was going to save it for new business, but I'll say it now, I would just be very cautious when anyone comes before the board and you make statements. It's certainly your four minutes, as long as you follow our rules and procedures, we're going to allow you that four minutes. But, you know, the comment was made about a water in a sewer not working in someone's house for six years. That is simply not true. I remember when the statement was made, I remember who made the statement, our staff has verified that was not a factual statement. So that's the only reason I caution you is whenever you come before the board and you say something, be careful that you've got the facts correct and you're not speaking on emotion. We're here to help you, we're going to do everything within our power that we can, but as the city attorney said, we can't legally tell a builder, we don't like you because we don't like hearing negative feedback that we're denying you a permit, as long as they're meeting the state code. So hopefully that was helpful information for you all, and thank you all for coming this evening.
Mayor?
Mayor, I'd like to say something, please, while we own this subject. As, as an alderman representing the city, I, I'm, I'm gonna make this statement not knowing all the facts, but one gentleman stood up here and said that he went to the department within the city and he spoke with employees and received some negative feedback from that employee. Now, I don't know if that's true or not, but for the gentleman to make that statement, I don't concur with our employees when they are approached by our citizens to open their mouths and make any negative comment to a citizen. If you don't have a, an answer, a positive answer to give them, or you don't know a, a answer to a question, you need to seek that information and respect that customer, especially with these citizens going through with what they're going through with their properties. I would not want to be in any one of you's place right now having to deal with this. It's unacceptable by that employee. If that's what happened, it's unacceptable. And moving forward, I do not allow and will not be a part of any employee talking to a citizen in that manner. And I'm quite sure the rest of this board feels the same way. That's all I have to say, sir.
Anyone else? Okay, move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second. Have a motion to second any discussion. Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Prill.
Alderman Prill. Alderman Royal.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Bass.
Yes.
Alderman Brunson.
Yes.
Mayor Odom.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, presentation by Craven 100 Alliance. I'm gonna invite Jeff Wood and not Owen Andrews, but we're happy to have Owen Andrews here to give us an update on the C1A. And this really came about during the board's work session that we had. There were some comments and some concerns expressed about, you know, hearing from the various entities throughout the city, both residents as, as well as the industry, on what they were seeing as concerns and needs without, throughout the community. Now, I recommended that Jeff and C1A come and tell us a little bit about it because I know you have frequent communication with those folks all the time. So floor is yours, sir.
Evening, Mayor, evening, Alderman. My name is Jeff Wood. I'm the director of economic development for Craven County. And then about that, by 501(c)(3) nonprofit, Craven 100 Alliance, de facto the executive director of the Craven 100 Alliance. Been in New Bern slash Craven County for a little over four years, come from the great state of West Virginia where it's snowing right now. So really glad to be here this evening. Had a great job. A lot of times people wonder what economic development is. The way that I explain it very simply is I am fortunate enough to go in front of people and brag about where I live so they'll make investments into where I live so jobs will be created for my friends and my family. And I've been doing this for about 20 years and it's been a pleasure to do this the last few years here. Craven 100 Alliance is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit public-private partnership between New Bern, Havelock, Craven County and the private sector represented here by Chairman Owen Andrews, who's been there from the very beginning since 2014. Happy to say on the private side, they, they've really done a phenomenal job in fundraising for this organization to bring in the dollars that we've needed to be able to make strategic investments to bring in those private dollars. And then also wanna thank the city of New Bern. That over about nine installments, there's been about $121,000 thrown in the Craven 100 Alliance from the city of New Bern. That's also been matched to a degree by Havelock as well as Craven County. So it really has truly been a public-private partnership. Since that time, since 2014, the C1A has been involved in projects that have brought in about almost $200 million worth of investment. $197,900,000 and 1,558 jobs either created or retained. Most of those have been created, but there have been a couple of projects where we stopped the company from leaving the county. A couple to note, and I gave you guys a pamphlet to go over some of the activities that the C1A's been involved in. In particular, when it comes to the city of New Bern and the area here, a few areas that I think that would be of interest to viewers is right now we're working heavily with the airport, a couple of different areas. One, we've set aside funds, particularly on the public funds side, to help them with enticing airlines to look at new flights into the area. You probably saw that last year, the airport made an announcement that it had received a federal grant. The C1A was a part of that match along with Craven County to get those funds here in place. Another thing that we're doing in that area is they have about 90 acres along the runway. We received a Golden League grant of $753,000, or the airport authority did, to put water and sewer into that area to open it up for development. And then looking for other funds to, to be able to bring in new opportunities in aerospace-related activities, one of our target industries. Another area that we, that I was very happy to help out with, Swiss Bear during the pandemic created a resiliency loan fund that helped several different businesses. The C1A was an investor into that project. The C1A was an investor in, one of the initial investors into the Volt Center. The project probably that, that caught most people's attention, that was involved with New Bern in particular, would be the announcement that Weber Marine had purchased Hattles. It was a situation where they brought in two other businesses, Mako and Ranger Brand, to, to combine into one facility, what they call their saltwater operations. Happy to announce that they're doing well. They've increased their employment and, or have continued to make that investment over the next few years. So we've, I feel very confident that, that your dollars have been invested wisely. Foster's on the executive committee along with Owen. And it's been an amazing effort to see some of the companies that we've brought into the area. If you're not familiar with Andy Schneider at Kimac, he's been in our industrial park. He actually moved his company here from New Jersey when the pandemic had just started. He called me on his cell phone on a truck on the way here and asked me, was he an essential employer? I said, well, you're essential to us, so we'll, we'll take you as soon as we can. He, he, he was thinking about moving to Wilmington. And a friend of his said, before you move to Wilmington, move your business to Wilmington, check out this town, New Bern. And he did. He fell in love with it. And I asked him why. He said, because Americana still exists in New Bern. That it has the ability for him to be able to grow his company. He loved where he lives. He brags about it on a regular basis. He's actually brought me a few leads at times. And, and there's something special about that that I've seen over and over again. Particularly, you know, the, the bigger announcements get to, get the headlines. But when you look at what's happened in the Craven County Industrial Park over the last few years, there's been about 250 jobs saved and, and created in that area, over a half a dozen companies. Everything from three employees up to about 30, which is the kind of diversity that you want across several different industries as well. To note on that, even though it's not within the city limits, we do appreciate the, 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 the water in the sewer that you guys have, have brought into the industrial park. Happy to say that most of that property that's owned by the county has been sold. We have about 48 acres left on the northern side of the, the park, on the Moen side. We've sold everything on the southern side of US 70. We currently have an engineering firm that's designing and doing the environmental work to help us divide out that property so we continue to create jobs. So thank you guys for this evening. I'm aboard and happy to answer any questions. As a good economic developer, I promise you that if I don't have an answer, I'll make it up. That's what we do with prospects all the time. So I'd be happy to answer the questions.
Board have questions. Alderman Kinsey.
Aerospace program that's at the airport, how many people are you looking to bring in to start that program? Are you waiting for the base? Or give me some update on that.
Sure. Right now, we do not have prospects because of the fact of how long it's going to be able to take to get that water in sewer. It'll take a few years for us to develop out that property. However, we do have interest in aerospace defense-related activities. We project somewhere around 100 jobs because that's what we've seen in the industrial park in a similar kind of investment. It's probably even a little bit of a conservative estimate of what we could look at doing. So definitely aerospace defense-related contracting, working with folks like, for instance, ASI, who made a five and a half million dollar investment in the industrial park, created 30 jobs. They're a supply chain manufacturer for the defense industry. So companies like that. Also, probably a little bit of a long shot, but I'm also of great interest into maintenance or repair for commercial aircraft. You have an interesting change in the airline industry. We all know the big three, but there's always these new exciting companies that are starting up like Breeze that are more leisure-related, and these companies are just getting started. And so the opportunity to not only ask them to make an investment into doing new flights into the area, but to also look at us for maintenance or repair. So those would be the two target industries that I would say that we're gonna be going after with that, with that area.
Would it be safe for you to share with us, with any companies that you've been reporting, trying to bring to this area? Do you have any names that you like to put out?
Yeah, typically, we, we, we keep that quiet until the end, simply because with companies, they do have business plans and investors, especially if they're publicly traded companies, most of the time I'm asked to go under a non-disclosure agreement, or at least act that I am. But I promise you that we do have a process to move forward where we'll be able to relay information whenever it would be most appropriate.
So the land that you have sold, are you expecting a, 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 a large employment to come in to fill that, that void there?
The 100 jobs? My assumption would be that it would be very similar to seeing what we, what we've seen in the industrial parks. Instead of one large employer, it'd probably be a series of employers that would come in and it'd be, I think, from three to 30 jobs. That's, while, while the, the bigger projects get a lot of notoriety, that's the bread and butter of what we've been able to see. As a matter of fact, after the Bass Pro Shop announcement, I had the Sun Journal go over and talk to some of these companies that when you combine them together, they are a large employer. And to an extent, they've, they've taken great risks. A couple of companies even during the pandemic moving their company here like Amy. I would expect it to be that way, but don't get me wrong, Alderman, if it's a large company, I won't turn that away either.
What type of connection do you have with the high schools and the community college in preparing people for these companies that's coming in? Can you share a little bit with us what you're getting from them?
Sure, sure. The C1A invests regularly in the CTE Expo that happened at the community college, or at the convention center every year. I actually sat on that advisory board for a number of years. I'm actually moving off of that in September. It's been a fantastic program to help folks get ready for that, that preparation to go into a certification program at the community college or somewhere else. Definitely, in my 20 years of experience, economic development has moved away from just real estate to workforce. I've had site selectors that ask me what kind of trading programs or working education programs we have as early as eighth grade. So those things are absolutely necessary. Cannot speak highly enough of Craven Community College. The Volt Center has been phenomenal. I think at this point in time, they have reported around 800 job offers from their, their graduates, those who had the certification. All of our industry, we have an industry council made up of most of our manufacturers, that we can get feedback and what we need to make investments on. They've all been very pleased with the Volt Center.
I'm just curious, what, what, what programs did they graduate from that was a, 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 a knockout? Could you share a little bit of that? I'm just curious.
Sure, sure. With, with Moen and Bosch, they both actually have lines at the Volt Center, so people are able to train there specifically what their job is going to be. They're also looking at specific trades, maybe not specific towards manufacturing, which is typically what I look at, but all of your trades such as plumbing and, and other professions like that that are in need, in demand. Those would be two that I can tell you that have been very helpful.
What you do is, do you think that you see that we as a board could do to help out along with what you already know that they're short of, that they, they can improve on?
Right now, everything that I'm hearing from our employers is more about numbers than it is quality. That there are just not enough people to fill the jobs that they have. I talked to a company today, smaller company, about 45 people, could use two people tomorrow, unskilled labor. We work with Interfaith Industries to make sure about the Burmese population, refugee population that's here. They've been fantastic. Folks to be able to get into, folks like BSH and Moen, integral part of their workforce strategy and have been critical for them many times. So everything from that to prison release programs to...
What is the percentage of that? I'm just curious. Refugees, what is the percentage of that population that you pull in from?
I, I'm not sure about percentage as far as their workforce population. I've not asked that specific question. I just know from a quality standpoint, all of my employers are extremely pleased with that, with that population coming in and the quality of work that they're getting from. I think that the population itself, Mayor, you may be able to be honest, is 2,000 to 3,000 people.
That's correct.
Is that something about right?
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
What about the prison? What is the percentage of guys that you're pulling from there? I'm just curious.
I, I can say that the company that I talked to today, they probably had about 10% of their workforce that came from that, that, that program.
Pretty awesome.
Yeah.
I used to be a jobs specialist for the New Shore, the council of governments, and that's the reason why I was just asking those numbers.
Sure.
Just trying to learn something.
That's it. And I'm definitely not the workforce specialist. That's our folks at the community college or NC Works. We work with them. They actually manage the, the career, the job fair that we have at the convention center later this year. But we are the investing partner in that. And so, but, and they have been phenomenal with their, the past few years as well. Happy to have them as part of our team.
We worked with them also. They've given us, what was it, Foster? I don't think he was manager then. They've given us three guys to work for us in the public works department. And they paid for everything. Only thing we had to do was give them someone to work with because the funds was paid through FEMA at that time.
Alderman Brunson?
Just a similar question to what Alderman Kinsey asked already, but since we're getting into long-range planning and where we wanna go as a city, the question I wanna pose to you is more of what is the city of New Bern missing? What do we need to work on from a C1A business development industry perspective, you know, in the county, at the county level?
The, the areas that I'll hear from our existing industry, and I will tell you that most of your job growth comes from the companies that are already here. Again, the, the excitement comes from bringing a new company in. Most of your, your jobs are going to be created by the people who've already made an investment here. Areas that I would be prepared for, other than your workforce education that we've already talked about, would be housing. It is a major issue. Everything from entry-level positions all the way through recruitment of your skilled labor and your engineer and management positions. Yeah, across the board, that has been something that has been brought up several different times. So, you know, it's one of those where, like I said, it used to be an economic development, put some water and sewer next to a flat piece of land and economic development, it will happen. And it's become very much more into weeds now of exactly how do you get them the most valuable thing that they have, which is their workforce. And we're competing with everybody else in the country when it comes to these issues. I will say that we don't always have to have it perfect. We just have to listen to what their needs are and then do our best, put our best foot forward like the Volt Center. Or they told us we need more flights into New Bern, so we made an effort to try to make that. That's the kind of things that they, they wanna see. They know we're not gonna solve all of these problems, but we can mitigate some of these issues. But those are some of the issues that I would be looking for.
Board, any more questions? Jeff, I wanna thank you for your leadership. Have you been in this position how long now?
A little over four years.
Wow, time flies. I wanna thank you, you know, for your leadership and what you've done. It's been extremely instrumental in, in, again, not only bringing new manufacturing and, and jobs here, but retaining what we have. We were all, most of us were at the 25th anniversary for BSH, just a tremendous event there. Their global CEO, I think had been in place for a month or two. He was there. But everyone had very positive things to say about New Bern, so we appreciate you being an ambassador for us. an ambassador for Austin County.
And I'm excited to work with Chris. I think you've got strong folks that have come into your your economic development department. Excited to work with him and the leadership that's over there. And between him and Melissa at the TDA and the chambers, all the folks that are involved with the Craven Airlines as well, I feel like we've got a really good team. And I'm an optimist. I see good things to come.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Next up is item number ten, consider adopting a resolution approving a lease agreement with state employees credit union for the ATM in the parking lot at three oh two Craven Street. I believe George Childs is going to make this presentation.
I know. Seem to have that effect on some people. Good evening, board, Mayor. What you have before you is a renewal of the ATM lease for state employees credit union, currently situated across the street at three oh two Craven Street in our current parking lot. The lease had been arranged to be renewed at the time of termination this summer. It was a twelve-month lease. At that time, the city opted to table the execution of the lease while parking arrangements and discussions were had on how the leasing of those parking spaces would be handled and if that would affect any of the ATM lease. Now that that's been clarified, we're back before you with this lease. We have had it reapproved by state employees credit union during that time period while the city was discussing the parking issues and lease terms of the parking spaces. State employees credit union acted in good faith and continued to make the agreed monthly payment as if the the lease was standing. So it's my recommendation at this time that that if you would approve the resolution for the execution of this continued contract, it is a twelve-month contract, so we'll be back before you this summer with a new renewal of twelve months.
Before the board discusses this, I just want to make a couple of comments. I believe that when this was initially instituted many, many years ago, we had a lot of employees, a lot of activity at City Hall. A lot of our employees used that, and I believe they did not charge ATM fee, which is not necessarily the case now, is my understanding. I guess my issue here is, number one, we're redoing the parking lot. We looked to see or asked to see if there were additional spaces that could be had in lieu of this. Did staff look into that?
Yes, we did. We did look at it. And by removing the ATM, where it's situated right now in the head of the aisle, and we would only gain possibly one space. So the the removal of it was not not a huge gain in terms of parking spaces.
And then my my last comment would be, Mr. Davis, is there an unfair advantage to the city only leasing this and not giving other banks an opportunity to lease this at this particular rate?
Could certainly open that up to to any other bank that wanted to to buy for the for the lease, for sure. Yeah, this one, because we're six months into it, if that was the thinking to to reimagine what we might do, I would suggest let's start thinking about it during the budget season now and have a new plan in place come July one, rather than try to rejig it right now. Certainly. And I don't know if staffs had a chance to even consider, even though it only gains one space, is there any place else where a smaller kiosk or something might go, given modern technology, that might might be more suitable for that?
Bear Plaza. I mean, I can think of a lot of places other than that. I mean, parking is at a premium, and for us to
Right.
give a deal to one particular bank without offering up for others, I mean, I personally would take the ATM out. I'm probably going to vote no, because I don't think it should be in the parking lot. I think they could find somewhere else to put their own ATM, but that's just me. Does the board have questions or comments?
I think it's beneficial for the folks. Finding a location for it is 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 something that's very important. Parking is another thing, but a lot of the employees and people that's downtown uses that a that machine a lot. So I think it's beneficial. Membership has its privileges. Each bank charges, and I think majority of the people that uses this machine here are members, if I'm not mistaken, from my understanding. I I don't know if that's full of fact, but that was something that I asked, and that was something that I was told. So I guess just finding a place for it, you know, within the area, that would be pretty much convenient for everyone due to time and parking, trying to get to the unit to use it. I think that would be the issue.
Alderman Brunson?
Mr. Hughes, how how far, I know we, as a board, discussed about the kiosks for the parking lot and everything, how far are we out from actually seeing any any plans work or whatever on that revamping that parking lot?
Our goal was to see that come in April first, but what we've experienced with all the construction going on at City Hall, we can't take advantage of this parking. So we're we're actually using quite a bit of the parking over there. So it's going to be a few more months. Once the elevator project is completed, that's going to free up some more parking spaces. So it will be at some point during the summer.
So, I mean, this is, we're asking for this to be, to renew this lease for a year.
No, ma'am, the this this lease would expire in in
June.
June twentieth of this year.
Just what I'm saying, so we're not asking for this lease to be renewed because of our plans with the
Well, no, we would come back to you. If the board wants wants to look at renewing this again for another year, we will come back to you in June for this. But this would just get this lease through June twentieth of twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
You know, Foster, the local government credit union, which is what city employees are a member of, not the state credit union, but you know there's a separation taking place.
That's correct.
And I'm not sure, I remember when that thing was put in over there, the tremendous amount of city employees, of course, they were all, a lot of them were based out of this building and across the street were using it. I'm not even sure, to be honest with you, if a local government, we might need to find out if a local government credit union member would be able to use the state employees, you know, ATM services.
So so LGFCU did did send some information out, and what they are doing is they're going to be transitioning over the next year to strictly online banking. So if you want to get a loan or whatnot, you have to go through the online process. And one of the things that they they want to do is have a relationship with a variety of ATM machines throughout the state where any of the LGFCU customers do not have to pay a service charge for that. Which banks they're going to be able to use, they haven't released that yet, but they've got pretty much a year to to implement their their plan.
So they won't have a office or a bank in New Bern?
As of right now, there will not be a a location where you can walk into and deal with someone. It will be online or by telephone.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Brunson? I kind of, I kind of think that, I mean, I'm going to vote yes on this because we're already eight, nine months to Mr. Davis's point into this contract, and as a good faith, we need to honor our promises. And but my thought is, I think you've heard pretty much the direction from staff that we may not extend this beyond June, and so there's some questions that we need to hash out before you bring another one. That's just my two cents.
If there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving a lease agreement with state employee credit union for the ATM in the parking lot at three oh two Craven Street.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? I just have one question. Are we, the previous lease that we're operating on, was it a month to month if we did not renew?
Probably so. I've not checked it, but that would be my expectation.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, we'll have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brunson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
No. Motion carries. Item number eleven, consider adopting a budget ordinance amendment for FY twenty-two twenty-three. Mr. Hughes.
So Mayor and Alderman, as you've noticed over the last six weeks, the landscape of City Hall has changed. We've had scaffolding on the west side of the building, that that has gone down, and we've had scaffolding on the east side of the building to go up, and that is for the brick repainting project. And as our contractors have been working to grind the mortar joints out, they have noticed a lot of the glazing in all of our windows have been popping off or missing. And so that's creating the situation where we've got to re-glaze these windows and repaint them so we can protect the structure. And so this is why we're asking for the budget amendment and the amount of sixty thousand dollars to start this work.
Board have questions?
Yes, I do. Mr. Hughes, what is glazing?
Glazing is basically the material that holds the windows in place. A lot of that on the exterior of the windows, you're not going to see wood holding the the glass in like you do on the inside. And so we've got to have a material in there to help us out with that.
Foster, is there any contingency built into this? Because I'm sure they're probably going to find some windows that are rotten and have to be replaced.
There is a little contingency in this, yes.
Okay. Any more questions?
We said little contingency. How much is a little, considering?
A few thousand dollars, yes, yes.
We usually have ten percent's average.
Foster, I'm certainly going to vote for this because we need to improve these windows, but we probably need to get someone looking, maybe Margaret, looking for a grant to do the historic windows, refurbish them. I know it's, there's none left, but we might be able to, at some point in time, look at some some four oh four mitigation money to weatherproof them and to rebuild them. So, eh, there might be some grants out there for, you know, preserving these old windows, because you can't replace them. I learned that at Fireman's Museum, they they have to be rebuilt. You can't put storm windows over them or anything. They have to be pulled apart and rebuilt in each one of them, and that's very expensive.
We could certainly look to see what's out there.
Okay. It's a pleasure, the board, for item number eleven.
There's no other questions. I make a motion to adopt a budget ordinance amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty-two twenty-three.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Brunson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes, motion carries. Item number twelve is appointments. I did not see any in the agenda package. Does anyone have one? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number thirteen, attorney's report.
Nothing reported tonight, Mayor.
Item number fourteen, city manager's report.
A few items to update the board on. First of all, we are having our spring employee appreciation luncheon this Thursday at the West River Recreation Center from eleven to one thirty. Lunch will be served during that time. If you're available, we'd like to ask everyone in the board to attend. It'll be a good meal. We'll be recognizing some employees who have recently retired and also longevity for those employees. I want to give you an update on the Pleasant Hill Community Center project. I stopped by there today, and contractors are installing the tile floors in the building, and it's looking, going to look really good. And we're anticipating the grand opening of that facility to be around the middle of April, as we get closer to everyone finishing up their individual tasks from contractors, we'll have a, we'll set the date and let you all know. Also, we plan on releasing the Stanley White Recreation Center bid this Friday. We anticipate the bid opening being April twenty-fifth, so I'm looking forward to getting that project started. I'm pleased to announce that we received another grant for the Duffy Field Stormwater Project. That grant came from North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, and the amount of the grant was for four point one million dollars. We also received another grant in the amount of four hundred thousand for planning. So for the Duffy Field Stormwater Project and grants that we've received, and this is over the last three months, there's six point seven million dollars for construction and additional four hundred thousand for planning. We're very excited about that. It's going to take a little time for that project to get started, but that's going to make a significant difference in that community. So a lot of money. We're excited about this. And that's all I have tonight.
Very good.
Question regarding the Duffy Field project, what phase are we in?
We'll be, we'll be completing phase one. There's some updates we wanted to make with with installing a pump. There was a, there was a pump that we were going to be installing there, so some updates with phase one, then we were going to finish with the rest of the phases on that project.
Okay, let's move on to new business. Alderman Prill, provide you the opportunity for new business. I know it's difficult in a meeting, but if you have anything for new business tonight?
I'm watching online, so there's a delay.
Would you bear with us just a minute?
Okay, let's move on to new business. Alderman Prill? I have, I have nothing this day.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Royal?
None.
Alderman Astor?
Nothing today, sir.
Alderman Kinsey?
No, sir.
Alderman Best?
Yes. Um, I get, I thought Jordan or someone would be here, but maybe Mr. Childs, I don't know if you can answer this question for me, or could you please come forward? I would appreciate it. There's a lot of construction going over in the Duffy Field community with Main Street, and there was a water leak, and I've had citizens reaching out to me all day wanting to know when this when this leak was going to be repaired and why haven't the street been repaired? And so can you just explain that to our citizens and let them know that just you're doing all of this infrastructure, that a pavement is just not coming right behind it the next week?
Correct.
And that's the problem I'm experiencing with a lot of citizens that live over there.
A lot of the streets in there that that you see now in the state of of Gravler have been milled out. The water and sewer infrastructure was upgraded or replaced in totality in those areas or repaired where needed to be. And what we have done in the past several years is when we select an area for resurfacing, we let Water Resources know so they can evaluate to see if they need to do upgrades in that area prior to us resurfacing. What we're seeing in the past was if we just went to resurface a neighborhood street, there may have been known of infrastructure issues that they could have repaired prior to us resurfacing. So we're trying to get it, we're trying to get all the work on the ground done and repaired before we resurface. But the resurface is coming. I will let you know that our streets department was in there today doing a little bit of regrading, putting some more rock on that road while we're waiting for the pavement contracts. So so it is coming. It is coming.
All right, thank you, sir. And that's all I have, sir.
Alderman Brunson?
Yes, I have two announcements, I guess. The Richard Dobbs, Spade, Daughters of the American Revolution, and New Bern, Sons of the American Revolution, will assist the Cedar Grove Questers on March twenty-fifth at nine AM to clean Cedar Grove Cemetery. So please wear your work clothes and bring your own gloves, rakes, and tools. But again, that's March twenty-fifth at nine AM. And then the next one is March twenty-ninth is National Vietnam War Veterans Day, and this year especially should be commemorated because this is the fiftieth anniversary of the day that the last US combat troops departed Vietnam. So our local chapter, the Vietnam Veterans Association, will be at Union Point Park gazebo from ten AM to four thirty PM, again, on the March twenty-ninth. To commemorate the day, they'll have displays and a helicopter out there, so please come out and welcome home our Vietnam veterans.
out and welcome home our Vietnam veterans.
Okay. Just a couple of items, board. I know I've got some tours scheduled with a few of you. Alderman Astor, I think maybe one of ours got finalized tonight potentially over in your area, but just want to continue to extend that offer. Our plan is for the city manager, myself, and the Alderman, we're going to tour the wards, looking at various issues that you have. Hopefully, we can be more proactive in addressing some issues going forward, so I want to remind you of that. Ms. Clerk, I think we're waiting on the retreat date. Do we have an update on where we stand with that, either you or the manager?
Yes, so we're waiting to hear from our strategic plan and consulting on some available dates before Brenda starts reaching out to you. So you should be hearing something at the latest by next week on dates.
Okay. And then my last comment is related to Mr. Frye and his deposit, if you will. I believe he's made a deposit that is being held here at City Hall, awaiting the determination from Redevelopment Commission on what they're going to do, whether they're going to accept that or not. I know that's a little, it may be a quirky situation compared to how a normal transaction would take place. I don't know if that's going to be what we're going to be experiencing with Redevelopment Commission going forward, but I want the board to be cognizant that we have a citizen that put an offer on the table, put the money up in earnest, and the Redevelopment Commission has a process, it's my understanding, that someone makes a presentation to them, they have a housing committee, they review that, and then at their next meeting, they make a presentation or recommendation on whether or not they're going to accept that. Mr. Frye, your initial deposit was made, I guess I could ask the clerk?
December.
So His money's been held for several months, and I don't personally think that is a good practice. So I would implore the Redevelopment Commission, especially our ex officio members who sit on that board, to engage and invite them to make a decision so this citizen can either move forward with his plans or get his money back. The last comment I'll make about that is, there was a lot of discussion at our last work session about the Days Inn property. There's a lot of misconceptions and misunderstandings in the city throughout with citizens on what they think we can or what we should do with that property. Mr. Davis, I know, has engaged on a couple of occasions to try to clarify legally what we can and cannot do. It can be complex, but it's really quite simple. So the reality is, is we can have an upset bid process, which is what we did with the tileboard slot, or we could give this to the Redevelopment Commission, and then they could put restrictions on this property. My concern personally with that, nothing against Redevelopment Commission at all, I believe they all have good intentions, but we have a gentleman here that's put an offer in and earnest money down, and it's been months, and they haven't made a decision yet. I personally, I feel like that that Days Inn property is a cornerstone and a key piece of the revitalization of, you know, that whole area. And for us to relinquish that ownership and property to the Redevelopment Commission without knowing what the plan is or what they could do with it, I'm not a big fan of that. I'm not saying that I wouldn't support it, but I would need a lot more information. So I believe just for the staff's and public's benefit, the next step is we're supposed to get an appraisal, and then that's an item that we'll probably be discussing in our retreat, I would assume.
Yes.
Alderman Best?
I just want to make a statement in reference to the Redevelopment Commission, in reference to Mr. Frye and the process that they're going through. I did attend their meeting this month, and that is the process. They will deliberate and discuss Mr. Frye's bid offer, and they will come back to their next meeting, and they will vote on how they're going to handle the sale, if they're, however the process turns out, whether it's in favor of Mr. Frye or not, in favor of Mr. Frye, and then at that point, they will make a decision, and Mr. Frye will be told at that meeting. So that's for their redevelopment's upcoming meeting.
Very good. And I'll just, I'll go on record and say that I appreciate the offer. If it were my decision, I'd vote to sell you the property. I think that's exactly what the purpose of the Redevelopment Commission is supposed to be, is getting folks within the community to invest and live there. So I'm fully supportive of your proposal. It has nothing to do with the project that Alderman Astor is looking to do. I'm keeping those two separate, because to me, there's plenty of land and opportunities to do both in the community, but I just want to publicly tell you I appreciate your interest and investment.
And I concur with you, Mayor. I think it's, the whole process that Mr. Frye had to go through, and I agree with Jeff, I just feel that there's a lot of properties that the Redevelopment Commission can utilize to build these homes and, you know, go forward with Mr. Frye's bid. But, and again, there's no disrespect to the algorithm, what he's trying to do to build those properties within that area, but I concur with you. I just hope, I hope that this is not a process that we as a board and the Redevelopment Commission in the future will have to go through with a citizen.
Alderman Kinsey?
Mr. Frye, I want to thank you for being a gentleman and standing up and holding on. And to you, couple, I'm sorry what has happened, and I hope that we can help you to get something going, to work out your situation. I hope tonight that we were able to explain everything to you, what we are up against and what we can and can't do. And from there, that's another step that you all have to make as well, is what we're trying to do to help to make sure that you have all the right documentation when you go forward, if you're going to make that next move. And I feel that what the mayor was saying, when they get together and go out there to match to see what actually has been done and is not done, they'll help you to have the documentation to go forward with, to do what you need to do. Hang in there. I know it's tough, but hang in there. You can do it.
Do we need a closed session tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, board, I overturn the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn.